We are reconvening our open session. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask trustee Inman to report actions taken in closed session.
There are two actions.
Mike.
There are two actions. The first, on a seven to zero vote in closed session, the board voted to issue a notice of rejection of claim number 638252 pursuant to Government Code Section 913. The governing board further authorizes the vice chancellor of Business Services or her designee to issue any appropriate notices. The second one, on a seven to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to approve the separation agreement for purposes of retirement as executed by a tenured faculty member of the district and has authorized the chancellor or designee to take all the steps necessary. The terms of separation include six months' pay and retiring medical benefits.
Thank you for that, trustee Inman. Now have the invocation led by trustee Milczuk, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Prendergast.
Thank you, President Jamal. Good evening, esteemed colleagues. As we gather for this pivotal moment at the close of another academic year, let us reflect upon the remarkable journey that we've all undertaken together. In the tapestry of our educational community, each thread contributes to the vibrant fabric of success for all of our students. Today, our community college stands on the shoulders of our professors whose unwavering dedication has illuminated paths of knowledge for all of our students. We honor the tireless efforts of our classified professionals whose behind-the-scenes work ensures the seamless functioning of our institution. And we celebrate the indomitable spirit of our students whose curiosity and commitment inspires us all. Inspires us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, now we do something fun. We are, I'm looking down at you. We are going to swear in our new student trustee, Charlotte Clemente. Welcome. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Charlotte Clemente.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. That was great. We are now at 3.6 public comments, and I believe we have 11 requests that have been submitted for comment. As a reminder, we do give everyone the opportunity to speak for up to two minutes, and I ask that you kindly adhere to those two minutes. So please try to do that. And I will call up the first two names on my list. Melissa Noel and Susan Akavan. And if I mispronounce any name, please correct me and I apologize in advance.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Noel, and I'm here advocating for pay parity. I am a full-time faculty member at Irvine Valley College in the English Department, and my husband is a part-time professor in Communications Studies at IVC. And I'd like to share our family story to show how lack of pay parity is affecting us. So when it came time for my family to buy a home, we looked for a house because that is what both of us had when we were growing up, and we wanted the same thing for our little boy. Long story short, even though I earned a full-time faculty salary and he worked a 15-unit load as part-time faculty, combined at two different districts, one of ours, right? We couldn't buy a house in the district, so we bought a house in Riverside County, in Corona. Here is the time cost of that decision. So my entire load is made up of face-to-face classes, so I take the MetroLink train to IVC four to five times a week. This takes me about 1 hour and 20 minutes, one way, from my home doorstep to my office door, one way. That means that if I take the train both ways, which I usually do, I spend about 2 hours and 40 minutes a day commuting. I'll say that again, 2 hours and 40 minutes a day commuting. So it's a sizable chunk of time. It's time that could be spent with my family or serving the institution or exercising, but instead I spend it commuting because our district didn't have pay parity when my husband and I bought a home. It would be nice if my colleagues who are looking to buy a house now could do so within the district. It would save them time and help them feel more invested, knowing that our institution was looking out for their best interests. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I appreciate having this time to speak, to share my perspective. Thank you for your role here. I'm Susan Akavan, a full-time professor in the ESL department at Irvine Valley College. I, like so many of my colleagues, am grateful and proud to work at our college and in this district. I'm inspired every single day by my colleagues, and I tell people all the time, it's a wonderful place to study and a remarkable place to work. I'd really rather not have to put an asterisk next to those statements noting that there are huge disparities in pay. It's mind-boggling to me, and quite frankly, disturbing, to know that our adjunct faculty are not paid the same as full-time faculty to do the exact same work in the classroom with the same passion and integrity and expertise and results for our students. Where would our students be and what would our colleges do without these faculty? I am ashamed to think that in an educational environment where we strive every day to address and improve on a range of equity issues, that we do not fully value the contributions of our part-time faculty. And I cannot accept with good conscience any statement claiming the contrary. Words do not pay the bills. It is time. It's time to move forward with integrity on this negotiation point of parity in a meaningful, significant way to set right this untenable inequity and to celebrate a positive partnership in our negotiation process. Thank you for listening and for carefully considering the Faculty Association proposals.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Next two people on my list are Rebecca Kaminsky and Lisa Alvarez.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Kaminsky. I am in the English department at Irvine Valley College. And to start, I wanted to share a quick fact. According to the 2024 California Association of Realtors' First Quarter Housing Affordability Report, an annual income of $349,000 is needed to purchase a median home in Orange County. $349,000 does not equal the combined salaries of two full-time faculty in our district. Here's the thing, though, I know you already know this because you live here. I also know that you don't control the housing market or inflation or the rising cost of, well, just about everything in our world right now. But what I do consider, though, is that our district, because we're basic aid, actually benefits from the increased housing costs in our area and the subsequent increase in property taxes that come along with it. Yet, until recently, the district wouldn't even negotiate to meet COLA. And this makes it appear to me that our district cares more about our new buildings than what happens inside of them, that our district cares more about telling our community we're equitable than actually practicing equity. Our district supports, it appears that our district supports, the very toxic cultural belief that teachers have limited, if any, value in our communities. Well, I can almost understand the first two because I think marketing matters and appearances matter in our community. It's the last one. The seeming little value the district ascribes to our teachers, where I sort of pause and wonder. And I wonder, if the district won't invest in and support the people who are directly responsible for the success of students, then what does it say about the district's willingness to invest in and support our students? Thank you.
Hello there. I'm Lisa Alvarez, professor of English at IVC and co-director of the Puente program there. It's so nice to see so many of my colleagues from our campuses here tonight. Thank you for showing up to speak to this issue. Last month, when I was here, I played a recording of a board meeting from 20 years ago. It was May. Apparently, this is what we talk about in May, right? And it was Suzanne Dobbs talking about the need for part-time parity. I've been spending some time on my office mate Roy Bowers' blog lately. I haven't found another recording, but I did find some wonderful notes from 10 years ago in May of 2013 in this room when Dr. Susan Bliss, who, as I understand, is still at Saddleback and is on our contract negotiating team, stood here and also advocated for part-time parity. So I guess I'm just trying to get us to think about history and perspective. And in the comments that Roy took down at that time in response to it, people just kept reassuring Susan that she had to be patient, right? Just wait, it's coming. I want to say, I think it's an opportunity that we can't wait for anymore. I think one of the things that the pandemic has shown us and the years in this country have shown us in terms of how we respond to that moment, that pandemic moment, that moment of great social reckoning, is that we need to think about these things in different ways. And we can no longer say, it's just too, I'm just sorry. This is just how the system works, and it works on the backs of these people. Too bad for them. We have leadership now, and we have opportunity now to be known for a truer kind of equity, and I ask you to consider that possibility, to think beyond what we have always done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next two people on my list are Anthony Sezurek and Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo.
Hello, my name is Anthony Sezurek. I've taught in the Political Science Department at Saddleback since 2020. Working at Saddleback with my students and my colleagues has been the pinnacle of my professional life. As a full-time faculty member, I strongly support our association's requests for a meaningful raise for all faculty as well as better starting pay for new faculty. I particularly, in particular, I strongly support pay parity for my part-time faculty colleagues as well as healthcare benefits for them. In my short time here, I have had the honor of working closely with a number of part-time faculty members on work both inside and outside the classroom. These projects have included co-developing course curriculum and research conferences and bringing informative speakers to campus. All of this work is uncompensated for my part-time colleagues. Yet, without their work and commitment, none of these projects would have occurred. Investing equally in our faculties and investment in our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, board trustee, student, new president, the new student in the board trustee, my colleagues and everyone. I'm Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo. I teach Spanish at Sarban College. This is my 30th year. I'm one of the luckiest one that when I was hired, I was able to buy a house. So I'm very, very lucky. So today, I want to give you some information about the cost of living in Orange County. I keep hearing, oh, we have the best salary pretty much in the whole universe. Let me give you some data. We are not. Okay, let me start with renting in Orange County. To rent an apartment here, in Mission Viejo, $2,453. One bedroom, one bathroom. Irvine, $2,000 to $2,900. Lake Forest, $2,300 to $2,700. Aliso Viejo, $2,800 to $3,000. Laguna Miguel, $2,700 to $2,900. Anaheim, $1,900 and $2,400. Rancho Santa Margarita, $2,500 to $2,900. San Clemente, $2,800 plus. Santa Ana, $2,570. Oceanside, many of my colleagues drive one hour to come to school, $2,500 to $3,500. The cost of living, national average, grew 157%. 157%. Now, I'm going to talk to you about what does it take to buy a house. I was the lucky one 30 years ago, I was able to buy a house. Buying a home, you need to have an annual income in OC, $349,200. Average salary for a five-year professor, five-year professor, $1,300. Orange County resident needs 3.5x annual income of average U.S. home buyer for average mortgage cost of median price single-family home in our area, $1,370. These are the prices today, so you can imagine how these new hired teachers can afford to live here, connect to the student, have class next to them, see them, go to coffee with them when they had to drive from San Diego and Oceanside. Thank you.
Okay, the next two people on my list are, I think it's Michelle Doherty or Mike. Michelle, sorry. Michelle Doherty and then David Francisco.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight to all of you. My name is Michelle Doherty, and I am part-time faculty at IVC in the English department, which has been an honor, and I've been teaching for 15 years. A few years ago, in but another set of faculty negotiations, one of my wise part-time faculty colleagues confessed he felt like an old potted plant whose roots had twisted round and round on itself in a sort of stranglehold. He appealed to the board then to please plant us in the ground so we can grow roots. The conditions we find ourselves in are just not sustainable, and they're just not healthy for all involved. Many of my esteemed colleagues have made many appeals over the years, going very far back, and similar appeals. And so I please, along with them, I ask you to see the value we bring and show us in ways that actually matter, ways that sustain us. I have said these words before, and I've made these same appeals, but if the tune doesn't change, can we sing a new song? Therefore, again, I say it seems reasonable to suggest that more stabilized lives can better enable our students' lives with salary commensurate, with community standards. We can focus more fully on equipping students for their own pursuits as opposed to focusing on our own survival. For it seems the more equipped we are as adjuncts who labor together for the same noble causes, the more likely our students will thrive. We thrive best together when each party flourishes, being protected and provided the very best working conditions possible. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good evening. These are all my fellow counseling colleagues joining me. My name is David Francisco. I've been a counselor here at Saddleback College for 25 years, and I'd like to address a different matter, also, though, that's being negotiated currently in relation to counseling faculty. It's regarding the seven extra-duty days which counseling faculty have used for decades to address various matters that arise in the service of students that cannot be accounted for during our regular weekly schedules. There are many ways that we have used these seven extra-duty days over the years, but one of the most important that I would like to focus on tonight is the mental health, personal counseling, and crisis issues that arise among our students. One of the ongoing frustrations that I personally have had as a faculty member at Saddleback is the lack of understanding about the mental health and personal counseling services provided by counseling faculty in the community college system. At four-year colleges and universities, you might know that you have academic advising typically done in departments in one place, and mental health and personal counseling services provided in a separate place by different people. But if you read the literature surrounding the foundation and development of the community college system in this country, and especially California, you'll find that there was a recognition and understanding that as an open-access institution, there's a greater need for professional counselors to provide personal counseling services as well as academic and career counseling to help students be successful. The reality is that the vast majority of personal counseling that occurs in this district to help students improve their mental health is provided by counseling faculty, and that fact is not understood well enough. These seven extra-duty days are often used to address various personal emergencies that arise frequently among our students. Taking these hours away or just assigning these hours for more appointments would significantly hinder our ability as counseling faculty in this district to deal with emergency issues as they arise, and it would lower the quality of our services overall. There are many examples we could provide, including counselors helping suicidal students and other personal counseling issues. In conclusion, we ask for your support and trust that we need these hours to provide the highest-quality counseling to our community in this district to do the jobs we love in serving students to the best of our abilities. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have three more requests to speak, and I'm going to read off all three right now. Brittany Adams, Loretta Nicola, and then Colleen Williams. I don't have any other requests to speak.
Thank you. I'm Brittany Adams. I have my daughter here. She's my prop. And first of all, thank you for having us here to speak. In the car right here, my daughter and I were talking about why it is that we're taking the time on a school night to drive here. I often tell her that when we have the power of our voice, that we should use it for other people to create a more just and fair society. And so tonight, I wanted to show her that's not just something we say, but something we do. I've been chair of the Humanities Department at IVC for almost a decade. Among the many things I do is hire and assist our dean in staffing our courses. And this means that I often have to break the news to new part-time faculty that at most, they may be able to teach nine units, three-three-unit classes per semester. Often, these new faculty are young, women, first-generation college students, queer, faculty of color. They don't own a home, they have mountains of student debt. I think of what I'm offering them per unit, what one LHE will buy. The average car payment, $726, maybe half an LHE. The average rent in Irvine, $2,700, one and a half LHE. The average cost of daycare is about $1,800 a month for one child, one LHE. By the way, the average cost of having a child without insurance, which we do not offer our part-time faculty members, is $6,000. That's more than the income a person would get from teaching a class an entire semester long. And I could continue to rattle off many statistics, but when you could pay faculty for an entire 16-week course, what amounts to just two Taylor Swift tickets? We are participating in an economy that is perpetuating the haves and have-nots. In my classroom, I teach U.S. history and gender history. I tell my students about the inequities of social hierarchies. I explain how terrible this has been historically for the country. I tell them about how this history intersects with racism, sexism, the oppression of the immigrant class, how it creates division, dangerous populism, how it threatens the stability of our democratic systems. And yet, I leave my classroom, and I go to my office. I participate in this hierarchy. I staff the same classes I teach, and I offer pennies on the dollar. So I'm asking you tonight to please allow me to do my job without practicing this hypocrisy. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, board. My name's Loretta Nicola, and I work in the nursing department. I've been here for 25 years, and I've been on this podium more than once on a couple of different subjects. It's kind of, you know, you get used to it after a while. It's kind of fun. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, to hear us. And as I mentioned to several of you walking in tonight, we respect you, and please also respect us, and thank you for that. I'm full-time, and working in the nursing department, you know that we're, you know, I don't know. I think we're loud people there, some people say, but it's what we do. But we do have the number-one program in the nation, number-one community college ADN program. And there's a reason for that. We, along with the rest of the faculty on both campuses, do everything within our powers. We wouldn't be in this position if we didn't have such a passion to serve other people. And so I think that our hearts and our souls are really in this business. We all know when our cost of merely living increases and the income doesn't, that it results in a decrease in our pay. It's not rocket science. People consider moving away, lots have, and others may move in to replace, but they don't. What I've seen is sometimes the people that move into don't understand our community, our population, our students. And that takes time for them to adjust and assimilate to that quite frequently. We have recently had reason to hire, I was on three sets of hiring committees, to bring nursing faculty in. And we really received some great, great faculty. And they're not easy to get, by the way. We require very specific faculty to teach pediatrics, to teach OB, to teach critical care. It's not, you know, so, and they have to have so much experience. They have to be content experts. So it's, they're specialized areas, and we're teaching people to save lives. The community knows Saddleback Hospital, or Saddleback, Saddleback College is a place. The community knows Saddleback Hospital, or Saddleback, Saddleback College is the place to retain students from. We, we, am I at my?
Well, I've let everyone go over almost, but if you could maybe wrap up in like 20 seconds?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My HOA has gone up $700, and I know that sounds astounding, and I do not live in a mansion. And so as a single person, that's pretty significant. And I just would ask that the gift from you all for a consideration of a paritable increase in wage would be very much appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Colin Williams. I'm the, I'm a Veterans Counselor here at Saddleback College and the Chair of the Vets Program. So I was asked when I attended, when I showed up to the meeting, to provide some public comments, and I did have a statement that was written from one of my counseling colleagues in the Veterans Office. But, you know, I want to speak in support of the seven extra duty days that we have to cover our time outside of our general counseling hours. And just for me specifically in the Veterans Program, you know, we spend a lot of time off the clock helping our students, and we take a lot of pride in that. We're passionate about it, and we do a hell of a job, honestly. We work really hard. You know, just for an example, you know, I think we're pretty, it's fairly public knowledge at this point that a lot of our students transfer to Ivy League universities. Those letters of recommendation are done over our winter break. I'm not on the clock when I read those and edit those. I'm also not on the clock when a student calls me from Mission Viejo Country Club who's participating in a free veterans golf training event that has had a complete mental breakdown on the course, where the golf pro calls me on my phone, and I have to go down there and deal with that situation. I'm also not on the clock, you know, when I hear, when I get students that haven't been paid their benefits for some reason or not, or other, you know, that they don't get paid on the first of the month. They call me. I get emails from them, and I respond to them, and I take a lot of pride in that. Those seven extra duty days are just a small piece of the puzzle. And when I look at my counseling colleagues here, I can assure you that all of them are as passionate as I am and put in just as much work as I do. And, you know, it's a little disheartening when I always hear during these contractual negotiations that our extra duty days are always on the table, that our professionalism is questioned, and our roles are minimized. It's disheartening, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for that. Seeing no other requests to speak, we're going to move on to Board Reports. And why don't we start out to my right with Trustee Milchek.
Okay, okay. Throughout this month, I've had the privilege of attending numerous end-of-the-academic-year events, which will culminate in our two commencement ceremonies this coming Thursday. These included all three of the IVC Saddleback College and District Employee Recognition Ceremonies. I love these employee recognition ceremonies. We need to celebrate our exceptional employee service, and we do. The Saddleback College Nurse Pinning Ceremony. The Saddleback College's Speech and Debate Team's Night of Champions Showcase organized by Professor Heidi Ochoa. The launch of the student publication of the IVC year with Advisor Kristin Sojenski and Lisa Alvarez. The Saddleback College Undergraduate Research Conference led by Professor Anthony Sojek. So many incredible scholarly presentations in so many disciplines, including biochemistry, molecular biology, psychology, and more. And I came back to Saddleback College from IVC to text the wonderful presentations by our wonderful Mars Rover team. The IVC College Honor Ceremony organized by Professor Emily Liu, where we learned the majority of the honor students who transferred to their dream colleges. And we learned that IVC Student Body President Diego Victoria was accepted by Yale with a $55,000 scholarship. Yay, Diego. Second meeting in a row. That's great. That's great. Great. Congratulations. At the Saddleback College Transfer Celebration chaired by Barbara Benvenides, where I distributed course to the transfer students. And I attended both the IVC and the Saddleback College Scholarship Ceremonies, where deserving students were recognized and supported, and donors were honored. And I'm in several organizations that give scholarships to both of our college students. I supported, I supported the Mars Rover team during this month. They're preparing for their upcoming competition in Hanksville, Utah, leaving by van on Monday morning. And these events showcase the dedication, talent, and achievement of our students and professors, and reflect the elegance, excellence, and vibrancy of our academic community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
On Friday, May 4th.
Your mic.
On Friday, May 17th, the IVC Valley Foundation hosted its annual scholarship award ceremony in the Hart Gymnasium, in which I attended. This year, they awarded $558,750 to 356 students, which is 6% above last year. President Hernandez reported that including emergency funds, book vouchers, and outside scholarships, this year, the IVC Foundation provided over $787,000 in direct support to the students. The ceremony included two speeches by recipients and from a scholarship representative. Their stories were moving and truly impressive. It was a wonderful reminder of the impact an education, especially a college education has on its students. There was also a wonderful continental breakfast served. It was a wonderful, it was a wonderful ceremony, and I was so happy to attend. And Alyssa is doing, and her committee is doing such a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay. Trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. Most of what I attended has already been explained, so I'm just going to say a few things. And I know that Tim will speak more to the Molten Nigal Water District Annual Landscape Garden Tour that we had on a Saturday morning, which I was very happy to attend. Learned a lot about what's happening here on campus, and I appreciated that. The pinning ceremony, as I always attend, is, you know, is near and dear to my heart. It will always be near and dear to my heart. I still, I still believe that I practice vicariously. For all those students that I taught, I know they're out there doing a good job. I also attended Irvine Valley College Employee Recognition, and I have to say that that is one of the most elegant ceremonies that we have on campus, and I appreciated all those people who got recognition. I also attended the Employee District Recognition Ceremony. I'm glad to see that we recognize everyone here on campus. What else did I do? Oh, I really enjoyed the College Core Medal Ceremony. I was able to participate in that. I'd like to thank David Mendoza for doing such a good job. And I think it's very important that we have our students working in the community because we are called the Community College. I will be at the commencement, and I hope that all of you and the faculty that were here tonight, I hope that everyone participates. That's the culmination of what we've done all year to honor our students. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Inman.
Good evening. I'm going to talk today, tonight I should say, about something that I attended. I'm just going to talk about one event. I was appointed to the Public Policy and Advocacy Committee for the federal government, and I attended, when we went to Washington, DC, we had a meeting in person, and now we're having meetings for Zoom until the next opportunity to be in person. So I just wanted you to know a little bit about what was going on. We had guest speakers, the Assistant Secretary of Post-education, Post-Secondary Education was one of them. They talked about the FAFSA, which all those counselors know. I guess what happened was that they tried to make it simpler, and they made it worse, at least temporarily. And so they had fewer people. Instead of more people, they had fewer people. So, you know, everyone makes mistakes and everyone gets a do-over. The second thing was the president's budget, and what was really interesting to me was that they talked about classroom-to-career a great deal, and they also were talking about dual enrollment. Those are things that we think are important, and it's good to know that they're being dealt with at that level as well. Let next, the community project funding is what used to be called earmarks, and it's in, you know, it's back. And they were talking about the restrictions on it and how the House and the Senate deal with it differently, and so it's possible to try to get those things. And that's one of the things that we advocate for when we do go to these places. The Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act has passed the House, and at that point, it didn't, it hadn't done the Senate yet. They were doing their own version. And it includes something that I find interesting since I'm interested in workforce, skills-based training. And you know what? I'm out of time, so I just want to say that we also, it's probably the most important, should have done it first, the legislative agenda will be helping to put together the legislative priorities for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, I too am looking forward to commencement on Thursday, and understanding I'll be attending Saddleback's commencement, so just a preemptive congratulations to the graduates from both institutions. I know when I'm at the IVC, I usually run into a lot of my former students and at Saddleback as well occasionally, so it's always exciting. And then congratulations to Sharla Clemente for being here and getting sworn in. We look forward to working with you. Other than that, no report.
Well, that was a report. All right. Sorry. Okay. Trustee Deck.
I'm not going to say anything new that my colleagues haven't mentioned. I do want to congratulate our new student trustee. Congratulations on your election and being sworn in today. I also attended the Nurses Pinning on May 6th. I think they, I've gone to a couple of these, and it's great every time to just see one of our great programs at Saddleback just kind of come to fruition and finally send these folks off into the medical field. Beyond that, just on personal note, I would like to share that I definitely hear voices that speak about the cost of living. I'm, I think I'm only only, maybe our student trustee is not one, but I think I'm the only person who rents their home or where they live up here, so I understand the issue on that front. I would also advocate that members here that are having a hard time finding a home, advocate at your city council to put more housing on the docket. Irvine is considering building more homes, but there's some, there's some groups that don't want that to happen, so advocate where you can, not just for me, but for yourselves as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Deck. Three things I want to report on. Two weeks ago, I was very proud, along with Dr. Stern and Trustee Rydell and others in the district, to accept the Molten Water Nigals Water Hero Award presented to Saddleback College. As I said in my remarks, at the event, water is life, and we here at the district and with Saddleback, I know IVC feels the same way. We're committed to building a sustainable campus. Let me tell you just a little bit about what Saddleback has done. Saddleback College has replaced 126,564 square feet of turf with best-in-class watershed-friendly landscaping, which is expected to save over 5.5 million gallons of water annually, and that's just from Phase 1. There's additional phases coming. Saddleback also installed smart irrigation technology in the areas we now have, and that now have native and water-conserving plants. And I can tell, tell you from what I saw in the tour I was given of Saddleback by the maintenance staff, facility staff, it's a team effort. It's the staff, it's the leadership, it's the faculty, it's the landscape architects, and the students have been, have been participating, so I thank you all for that. We're very proud of that accomplishment and to accept that award, keep it going on Phase 2 and 3. Two other things, the commencement kind of stands alone as the, I guess, the pinnacle events, but the, but the scholarship award ceremonies were amazing again. And my congratulations to the two foundations and their leadership and their Board of Governors, who are all volunteers, and to the donors, and of course, to the students who earn their scholarships. Very impressive and proud to be part of that effort. So with that, student trustee Clemente, would you like to say a few words? This is the time at the meeting when we allow the student trustee to, you're welcome to.
I just want to say thank you so much to all those who have supported me along the way. I saw some of my professors in here. I know they're here on something else, but I know you guys are supporting me too, so thank you. I also see my foster fam back there. Love you guys. But I'm so grateful to be here, so thank you.
Welcome again. I know you're going to be a valuable part of this board. Let's turn, let's now turn to our associated student government reports, and let's start out with Saddleback College, Kristin Suazo.
Hello, hello. Thank you all very much. For my report, we had our banquet just two, two weeks ago, and where we gave our ASG awards for 2023 and 2024. Our students are finishing finals this week. Just stated, we had our Foundation Scholarship Ceremony, where we distributed scholarships. Our associate student government received the donor of the year award as we continue our dedication to donate portions to the foundation. Our commencement is on Thursday, where we celebrate our Class of 2024. Me and our vice president have appointed all of our appointed positions for next year's ASG for the Senate, our Senate branch and executive branch. Most importantly in my report, we are working, I am working with our Director of International Students, Director of International Students, on a research trip to Beijing, China, and Tangshan, China, where we will meet with Tangshan Polytechnic students for a cultural exchange. This is an amazing opportunity for student leaders at Saddleback. That could lead to a five-year partnership, I've been told. I know it's on the agenda on the board tonight, and I hope that we can promote this opportunity in the coming years. I'm excited to be Saddleback College's next ASG president and attend these things next year and working with all of you guys. Congrats on Sharla, on her successful election. I hope to be working with you next year, so congrats up there. I've received word that you have approved the student housing plan. Thank you all very much. This has been something that I've been talking about with President Stern for a while, so I'm glad that you guys have voted to approve that. I'd like to close by asking all of you to please listen to the testimonies from our professors and help with equal pay, as well as the extra days for our counselors as well. These people are not only the backbone of South Orange County Community College District, but of the nation as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for that. Now, IVC, Diego Victoria.
Good evening, everyone. It's, it is my last board report and last board meeting as student body president, as I will be transferring out, but I'd like to take the time to report on a couple of things that have been happening at IVC. On May 4th, we had a food giving drive called IVC Cares, in which we donated over 500 meals and pantry items to students. We're currently preparing for a commencement ceremony, which is on Thursday, and a huge thanks to the Student Life Department, everybody that's working to create an amazing atmosphere. I'd also like to give thanks and congratulations to Sharla Clemente for being the new student trustee, and the Thank You Goes for always supporting me and always being someone to listen when I needed someone. And I'd also like to think, take the time to thank the people that support me the most academically. One of them is in the room today, and that is Dr. Amy Jo Hall. He will be moving on with a new chapter of his career, and I want to take the time to thank him for everything he has done and for being a mentor for me both inside and outside of the classroom throughout my entire time, my entire two years. I could not have done the things I've done without him, and I'm very grateful for everything he has done. No, he has an amazing, bright future ahead of him. I'd also like to thank Dr. Ross Prado, Director of EOPS and Affiliate Pro- I'd also like to thank Dr. Resoprado, Director of EOPS and Affiliate Programs, for all of your support and opening a world of successful Latinos, which, to be honest, I was not exposed to at the time. And personally, I do want to also congratulate the incoming student body president Clarice Encarnacion, who in June will be giving the board report, but due to finals could not be here today. But with that being said, I also want to give thanks to the South Orange County Community College District and also a couple of people from Beckman High School, like trustee or Mr. Prendergast for the support as well. I will be transferring to Yale on a full ride scholarship. I was also named. Thank you, yes. Sorry the time is out, but since my last seconds, I'll take a little bit more time. I was also named to be a Jack Kent Cooke Scholar, which is one of a national competitive transfer scholarship. And it's been an amazing time and it's thanks to the preparation and the foundations that this district and IVC has given me and the people that have supported me, that I've been able to represent everyone nationally. And I hope to use this preparation and foundation to one day come and speak in this room every month, but looking through the other side of the room and behind those desks. So thank you very much for all of your support and I'm excited to take everything on to Yale.
Which district do you live in? All right, that's okay then. Good luck. Congratulations. Been, you've been an awesome part of this board the last year and we're so proud of you. You're going to do great things. We're now moving on to the IVC Academic Senate, and it's not Rebecca Beck.
It's not Rebecca. It's Summer Surplus. I'm academic affairs chair here for Rebecca tonight. Last time I was here, which was in December, I shared an update on our Center for Professional Learning, which we're naming the hub for innovative educators. And Rebecca asked me to share an update tonight. As a reminder, we, based on the feedback we had from our listening sessions with our partnership resource team, we're building a center that will provide professional development for all constituency groups on campus, including faculty, classified professionals, and management. So far this semester, we have developed a professional development plan, designated a physical space for the center, and appointed a one-year interim faculty coordinator, which is me. And reviewed current institutional and district data on professional development and discussed evaluation options with our Director of Research Planning and Accreditation, Laura Sfagioli. In our review, we learned that overall professional development seems to be going fine on campus. Therefore, we're not aiming to fix professional development, rather we're aiming to enhance and streamline professional development at IVC. The plan we created this semester builds upon the foundational idea that everyone on campus is an educator and focuses on students first. It also states our goals of streamlining professional development on campus and creates a culture of continuous improvement and open-minded learning, highlighting IVC expertise and bringing an outside expert as needed. We also hosted listening sessions with all of our constituency groups, including the students on our ASIVC group. Next year, we will continue to build upon the momentum we have created by launching a series of programs, including a series of workshops on AI and a community of practice building on the work our classified professionals have done as part of the Caring Campus Initiative. We'll also be working on building our technological support. Thank you to Rick Miranda, Ace Kagiwa, and Rebecca Beck for their work on the steering committee and our PD task force, especially Sharla Clemente, our student. I would quickly like to say congratulations to the class of 2024 and reiterate Rebecca's advocacy, which she shared in her April board report for the competitive compensation of our faculty, noting that giving our faculty a fair and sustainable wage and thereby affirming their value and attracting and retaining exceptional talent is the best way to invest in our students.
Thank you. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by thanking trustee Milchiker for acknowledging that without the faculty, there would be no colleges. So thank you very much for that. I would now like to highlight some of the work of the Academic Senate at Saddleback over the past year. And I will be brief, there are many things to say. We added new credit and non-credit courses, programs, and certificates. We made substantial progress in responding to the challenges and promises of AI in the classroom. We had a successful first year of our two-year culturally relevant pedagogies and practices grant. We continue to be at the forefront of state efforts to expand the use of ZTC, which is zero textbook cost instructional materials. We continue to increase the number of degrees and certificates that can be earned fully online. Summer of this summer, summer 2024, we are sending a planning team to attend the statewide Great Teachers Conference with the intent of offering a reinvigorated local Great Teachers Conference, summer '25. We participated in statewide efforts and will continue to do so to develop revised course templates to implement AB 1111, which is common course numbering. That would be across the community colleges, Cal States, and UCs. We eliminated final exam week schedule beginning fall '25 to align with IVC and to help students who take classes at both colleges. With IVC faculty, we investigated the feasibility of moving to a compressed calendar and the consensus was not at this time. So we may revisit that in the future. We also began work on addressing the impact of AB 928, which established Cal Getzi, which is a single transfer model curriculum for students moving from the community colleges to the CSUs and the UCs. And finally, we revised our bylaws and our constitution. Thank you all for, I'm not sure I would say it's a privilege, but this is my last meeting as Academic Senate president. Next meeting, Dan Walsh will succeed me. It has been quite the learning experience and I thank you all for that.
Thank you for that, Margot. Faculty Association.
Good evening, Chancellor Barnes, President Jamal, trustees, administrators, student leaders, classified professionals, dedicated faculty, students, and our community members. As I come to the end of the term as president of the Faculty Association, the word that kept coming to my mind was gratitude. Gratitude to Chancellor Barnes for her support and for taking the time to get to know me. Gratitude to the Board of Trustees for all of their support and their time. Gratitude to Dr. Cindy Viscachill for all her support, her time, her sense of humor, and her candy. Thank you. And your collaboration. Gratitude for the opportunity to serve the faculty in this position. Gratitude for the trust the faculty had in me during the last two years. Gratitude for the trust and faith the executive team had in me for the last two years and even for suggesting I run for the position in the first place. Gratitude to Louis Long and Claire Cesario for their incredible mentorship. Gratitude for all the learning. I have learned so much. It was a steep learning curve. Gratitude for the membership of my fellow executive team members and the experience which was only filled with integrity and respect. Gratitude for the support and everyone's grace with all of my technology snafus, Zoom, microphones, et cetera. Gratitude for all my new connections, the faculty, the board members, different district employees, many that I had the chance to meet with and work with over the last two years. Gratitude for all the work the members of my executive team have done. Gratitude for the representative council and their commitment to the Faculty Association. Gratitude for the work that unions do. Gratitude for an experience which is most definitely has been the highlight of my career. Gratitude for all the people continuing the work on the executive team, the negotiating team, and the rep council, and in the members coming in to support. Gratitude for a chance to serve the field and the colleagues in which I've worked for the last 30 years by supporting fellow teachers through ensuring a safe and respectful working environment. And finally, gratitude for my great uncle, Samuel Rosenblatt, a union member for the Baker's Union when it wasn't safe to be in a union. He set the standard for me and I hope he's looking down on me with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Melanie. You did a great job. I didn't. We didn't notice any technology snafus up here. Okay. I think we're at IVC Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Time went by fast this year. It's our last General Assembly for Classified Senate tomorrow and we're now busy preparing for our summer retreats. We are holding a summer leadership retreat for IVC in June and hosting a joint executive board retreat with our colleagues from Saddleback Classified Senate in late July. On the week of June 3rd, we are sending a delegation of seven representatives to the upcoming Classified Leadership Institute in Riverside, aiming to bring back the coveted spirit stick as we compete against other community colleges across the state. I would also like to take this time to celebrate IVC's Classified Employee of the Year, Karen Jimenez, who is on tonight's agenda. Karen has dedicated 14 years to our district in various roles and currently serves as a senior foundation development specialist for the IVC Foundation. She excels at her work and is deeply committed to her community, both locally and statewide. Karen has served as the IVC Classified Senate President and is currently the President Emerita for the California Community Colleges Classified Senate, or 4CS. She is also one of our four 4CS members collaborating with the Institute of Evidence-Based Change to support community colleges statewide through, with their caring campus initiatives. Karen's positive attitude and proactive involvement have made a significant impact at IVC and beyond. She confidently proposes ideas and advocates professionally for her beliefs, positively influencing IVC and its students. We have also had the privilege of recognizing our caring campus ambassador at our employee recognition ceremony, and we are proud to celebrate my predecessor, Desiree Ortiz, as our new caring campus ambassador. Desiree was instrumental in putting caring campus at IVC at the forefront, helping integrate a heightened culture of care on campus, and has served as a mentor for caring campus at our district and statewide. To both Karen and Desiree, on behalf of my classified colleagues at IVC, we congratulate both of them and commend them for their amazing hard work. And of course, congratulations to our upcoming class of 2024.
Thank you. Right, right on time. Perfect. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees. I want to begin by celebrating Saddleback's new Classified Employee of the Year, Raj Dillon, who is an outstanding lab tech in the automotive technology program. As expressed by one of his colleagues, Raj stands out as an exceptional classified professional due to his outstanding professional, personal qualities and professional excellence. In addition to his strong work ethic, Raj's commitment to student support, community partnerships, and continuous improvement sets him apart as a truly exemplary employee. He is always seeking opportunities to expand his skills and knowledge, whether through professional development opportunities or by staying up to date with the automotive industry trends and best practices. His contributions to the college are invaluable and he exemplifies the qualities of excellence, dedication, and professionalism that this award seeks to recognize. We collectively congratulate Raj as an outstanding classified professional at Saddleback College. In addition, we would like to congratulate our ongoing leadership in Classified Senate and celebrate Erlin Balo, a success coach for the Promise Program, this year's vice president on Classified Senate, and who will be the incoming president for this next academic year. Furthermore, Saddleback Cares received feedback that classified professionals are seeking more opportunities to enhance their skills in creating great customer service experiences for our students. With that in mind, with a focus of our students at the forefront and with the full support of Saddleback's administration, we will be offering an exciting new professional development opportunity for a group of classified professionals to participate in the Disney Institute Customer Service Training. Classified professionals will learn firsthand how Disney implements their magical customer service experience, widely recognized as the gold standard in the industry. Following the Disney training, all attendees will participate in a Saddleback Cares Training Design Work Group that will weave the Disney principles into our five core caring campus behavior commitments and design a college-wide customer service training event to be held in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. CSA president.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Barnes. First of all, we want to thank the board for reading the resolution, recognizing California School Employees Week that you did last month. This is the week of California School Employee Week, and so we're going to be celebrating that with, here at Saddleback College, for our classified professionals. This is the week that classified professionals, who always take pride in their work, really shine publicly, and it's commencement week. Commencement week starts with the leadership of our esteemed college presidents, Dr. Stern and Dr. Hernandez. But the classified professionals, who are so part of the apparatus to make commencement successful, it is amazing that every single department and every classified professional in that department has such a hand in trying to make commencement successful for our students. The college presidents clearly send the message that students are our priority. And so when it comes down to commencement, it is part of a moment in time that they will always, always remember. And having successful commencement at the respective colleges is part of students remembering that one moment in time when they can actually celebrate their achievement. So this week, I had the focus and the laser-like concentration to make commencement very successful is very evident with our classified professionals. And we want to thank the Board of Trustees, who are always in support of our classified professionals, and we so appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next up, I believe we have the police, the POA, Police Officers Association.
Good evening to all and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I'm not going to be long because we're going to have our Sergeant Steve Brown to introduce some programs that we're doing over at IVC and look forward to transitioning, also doing it here at Saddleback College. So I'll let him talk, tell you what our programs are doing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergeant Stephen Brown and I have the honor to represent police officers assigned to the Irvine Valley College Police Department. I'm hopeful this time we'll help you reconnect with your campus guardians and reaffirm our importance to the South Orange County Community College District. We strongly believe in being part of a caring campus, which is why our community policing practices always come from the ethos of care. We directly contribute to our staff, faculty, and students' success with this caring ethos. We know our community colleges are diverse and our police departments play pivotal role in making sure our campus community is not only safe, but that each person feels supported by our police department. We at the police department have been doing our part by aligning our students' support programs with Vision 2030. We've expanded our work programs and mentorships to help students with workforce training, especially our students from diverse backgrounds. We have partnered with the Administration of Justice Work-Study Program, allowing students to shadow employees within our police department. We've also partnered with Financial Aids LEAP program, which supports students seeking a career in law enforcement who need valuable work experience. Each officer is now a student mentor, directly involved in student success. Personally, I'm an advisor, club advisor to IVC's Amateur Radio Club and have spent time advocating for my students. The caring campus runs, runs deep within our department and is found at all levels. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Phil Romero is a mentor to the Puente program. We also continually extend ourselves to staff and faculty by providing training at their convenience that includes such topics as fire and earthquake drills, community emergency response, response to active shooter, stop the bleed, and tabletop exercises with our crisis management team. These are just some of the ways that we contribute to IVC's vision of success by providing exceptional services to staff, faculty, and students. We continuously preserve, we seek avenues of success by forging dynamic partners, partnerships that keep our community safe. We build these partnerships in trust and in transparency and full knowledge of their value to our community. On behalf of the entire IVC PD team, I am honored to say we are humbled to have been embraced by our campus community and will strive to continuously serve our community. I thank you for your time and I look forward to more time in the future.
Thank you for that. Do we have a second update, Saddleback, or no?
No, 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 thank you at all. We just have our esteemed bodyguards with me, and they're just making sure you all listen to us.
All right, no problem. Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, before we move on, just point of personal privilege. I saw Dan Klaus back there, and I should have said in my opening remarks, congratulations to the Saddleback College baseball team for making it to the state championship tournament. And Coach McCartney and the entire team. All right. We don't have any public hearings, and we're now going to move on to resolutions, and I'm going to turn this over to Trustee Edman.
Thank you. There are 10 resolutions being submitted to the board this month. The first six resolutions honor our outstanding classified staff and managers of the year. Item 6.1 is a resolution for Karen Jimenez. A Senior Foundation Development Specialist at the IVC Foundation is named 2024 Irvine Valley College Classified Employee of the Year. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Karen Jimenez for her outstanding dedication and professionalism, and officially recognize her as 2024 Irvine Valley College Classified Employee of the Year. Can we have a motion, please?
Second. Motion from Trustee Rydell, second from Trustee Jay.
Thank you. We will now vote.
The resolution is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is a resolution for Dr. Tracy Fahima. Fahimi, a dean, I'm sorry, a Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences and Business Sciences is named for the 2024 Irvine Valley College Manager of the Year. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Tracy Fahimi for her outstanding dedication and professionalism, and officially recognize her as the 2024 Irvine Valley College Manager of the Year. May we have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second, Trustee Jay. Let's vote on the item. Resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
Item 6.3 is a resolution for Raj Dillon, a Senior Laboratory Technician. Automotive Technology has been named Saddleback College 2024 Classified Professional of the Year. Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Raj Dillon as the 2024 Saddleback College Classified Professional of the Year. May we have a vote, a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. Resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Item 6.4 is a resolution, resolution for Kim Darcy. Dean Instructional Support and Teaching Innovations has been named the 2024 Saddleback College Manager of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Kim Darcy as the 2024 Saddleback College Manager of the Year. May we have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion from Trustee Rydell, and a second from Trustee Milchiker. So let's vote. The motion, the resolution passes on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Item 6.5 is a resolution for Judy Perez. Program Research Analyst has been named District Services 2024 Classified Employee of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Judy Perez as the 2024 District Services Classified Employee of the Year.
And she's here. She's here.
Yeah.
So move, so move.
All right.
Second. Motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Rydell. Let's go ahead and vote. The resolution passes on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Congratulations.
Item 6.6 is a resolution for Jackie Han. Assistant Director of Fiscal Services has been named the District Services 2024 Manager of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Jackie Han as the 2024 District Services Manager of the Year. A motion, please?
So move.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second, from Trustee Jay. Let's vote on the item. Resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Congratulations to Karen, Tracy, Raj, Kim, Judy, and Jackie for this well-deserved recognition.
Sure.
We thank you for your dedication to our students, our colleges, and our district.
So, Trustee Edman, can I ask you to pause for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
So Judy, would you like to take a photo with your family up here?
Oh, that's a good idea. There are four additional resolutions being submitted to the board for approval this month. Item 6.7 is a resolution that expresses support for the designation of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, to highlight the critical role of the district and its colleges in providing crucial behavioral health sciences, services, and resources to the students and employees. Be it proclaimed that the South Orange County Community College District does hereby declare May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and continues its commitment to partner with our community members to ensure that all mental health services are accessible, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all SOCCCD stakeholders. A motion, please?
Motion from Trustee Rydell.
Second.
Second from Trustee Prendergast. Let's vote. Resolution passes on a unanimous trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Trustee Edman.
The next resolution is number 6.8 for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This resolution is to recognize and pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, who have enriched the history of the United States during the month of May. Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees and the Chancellor proclaim May as Asian, American, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Can we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Let's vote. The resolution passes on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
The next resolution is item 6.9 for International World Hunger Day. Be it resolved that South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees does hereby recognize May 28th, 2024 as International World Hunger Day, and encourages all employees and students to observe the day with appropriate activities in advance to bring awareness to hunger across the world. May we have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Let's vote. The resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
The last resolution, item 6.10, is being submitted to commemorate Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, Asexual Plus Pride Month in the South Orange County Community College District. Whereas SOCCCD celebrates this rich history, acknowledging the contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals have made and continue to make to strengthen the fabric of American society and its promise of equal rights for all. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College does hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. May we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Prendergast. Let's vote. Resolution carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. That completes our resolutions. Thank you, Trustee Edman. Now. Okay. We are going to go out of order here, and we're going to move on to presentations and discussion items. And the first item is the presentation of the new South Orange County Community College District logo.
Good evening, Honorable Trustees. My name is Latisha Clark. I have the pleasure of serving as the District Services Chief Communications Officer, and I am excited tonight to be able to present to you and reveal to you the new district logo. You articulated in your last board retreat that you wanted enhanced marketing, including the development and design of a new district logo. And with the retention of GradCom, led by CEO Cheryl Broom, who's going to present the full process to you this evening, we were able to engage in a very participatory process that had a lot of voices and thoughts that went toward a very inclusive design. So we're excited to present that to you tonight. For the board members, and I promise that this other half of the dais will get your swag a little later. I promise it's coming. But you all got a polo and a water bottle, just to give you a sneak preview of, don't show yet, we're going to reveal it, hold on, of what it can look like. And so we're just really excited, and I want to thank you in advance for your engagement and your time and your thoughtfulness in this process, because it really is a collective effort, and the brand really speaks to the heart and the soul of, you know, any organization. So we're just so proud that we'll be able to wear, you know, our college and district logos with pride and really enhance the brand and the image and the reputation of the South Orange County Community College District throughout Orange County and beyond. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce my colleague, CEO of GradCom, Cheryl Broom, to present to you the whole process of the logo. Cheryl.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. We have worked with your district for several, several years, but the logo project since about October. So it's been a long process, and we've talked to lots and lots of people to get where we are tonight. So I'm really happy to show you that process and dissect the meaning behind the new logo for you. So we had an eight-part process that began with virtual interviews with the chancellor, with Latisha, with your marketing directors for both campuses, with the chancellor's executive council. We interviewed each board member individually. Then we developed a survey, which went out to the entire district, analyzed the survey results, came forward with recommendations, and then began a design process. So I'm not going to go through every single one of these steps. We're just going to start at step five, and I'm going to show you some of the results of the survey and how we used all these various voices to come up with a design that reflects what the district is and wants to be. So the survey was sent out in November, and we had nearly 600 individuals start the survey with 445 completions, which is a 79% completion rate, which is very high. So we were very pleased with that. Most people were employees, classified professionals and faculty and staff, about a third each. And then we had current and former students and administration and managers take that as well. So some of the results from the survey, we asked people to tell us the support for a new logo, and I don't think it's a surprise that it was an overwhelming yes, that people did want to see a new logo, a modernized logo. But we asked, what do you like about the current logo? What is something that you enjoy or resonates with you? And so these are two word clouds. One is showing what people liked on the left, and one are showing things that they didn't like. And so the size in the word cloud is representative of the frequency of the response. So you could see people liked oranges, representing Orange County and IVC, Saddleback, the mountains, the district. What was not liked was people thought it was outdated, that it was too busy. And these were things that were also shared with us during one-on-one interviews and meetings as well. We wanted to see what direction we should go with the design. Should we be showing both campuses in a design? Or should we do something completely different? And so we asked people, what do you think about, how important is it to have both colleges represented in the district logo? And more than half the sample believed that it was very or somewhat important, where only a quarter thought it wasn't important at all. So we're starting to see a direction emerge now with the mountains and the oranges and wanting both of the campuses represented in the district logo. Those people who said they did want the campuses represented, we didn't want to just go exactly with what you currently had. So we asked, well, what do you think represents each campus? And you can see it's the mountains and the oranges were the main two responses there. So just some overview, some high-level results. There were more questions than that, but those were really important when we were looking at design. There was strong support for replacing the logo. People criticized the current logo just for its clutter, for an outdated design and color scheme. We found that people were, found it really important to have a visual reference to both colleges. And people said that they really wanted the logo spelled out. So it is here behind you in the boardroom, but on publications, it's just the acronym. And people wanted to see the entire district spelled out, for those who don't know what SOCCCD is. So our recommendations, we came back and we said, we would like to present something clean, something modern, a new color palette that represents the, both of the colleges. We want to have greater prominence and a full rendering of the district name. We want to present one, at least one option that has both colleges as part of that option. We talked a lot about using a shield, which is something that you can use independently of the name, a mark that designates the district independent of the full logo. And just something aspirational and forward-looking that just better captures the progressiveness of your district. So we're going to do an unveiling in a second, but just so you know, the logo process, the design itself was another process. So we came back, we gave three options, something kind of crazy, crazy out here, and something a little bit more subdued. That went through revisions, and here we are tonight to show you what it looks like.
Latisha, do you want to, shouldn't we unveil it up here?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, while she's walking up, I'm going to talk about a couple elements, and then you'll get to see it. So here's our creative direction through all this research that we found going forward. We want to represent the region's colleges visually through our design, our typography. And also, we want both to be equal in size, so that there's equality between the two of them. We want to show a spirit of collaboration and unity by adopting the colors of both of the colleges. And Latisha and I did not coordinate our suits tonight, but we're on the same wavelength with your college colors. We wanted to have it appealing and clean, incorporate a shield, which is very common in higher education. And we wanted to maintain the sun as this aspirational feel, the sun rising up and the trajectory that it takes throughout, throughout the course of its journey. So this is the new logo. You can pull it off. We're ready for you.
They can't see it.
So the mountains. And orange trees. So two quick options when we, when you use this in design, there is the one logo I'm showing on the screen that was held on the right side, and that has just a simple black border. But the district has adopted its own color palette, and so it is possible to use that palette in a logo design as an outline of the logo itself. So it just gives you a little bit of variety. And it's really fun to see these things in action. It's one thing to have it on the poster board, but as you could see, when you do see your logo in print or people wearing it, it looks really sharp, it looks really clean and modern. I think it's something that you'll be proud of. So this is what letterhead could look like, your letterhead package. So this is what letterhead could look like, your letterhead package with your business cards. A lapel pin, this was, is very coveted by many administrators. Really would like a nice lapel pin. So that is something that you can wear, you know, with pride to events, things like name tags. You know, your website will need to be updated as well. And just looks really clean and modern. There's polos and hats. So we have fun showing you, you know, possibilities when you start rolling out the new logo. And we have really enjoyed working with the district and the colleges. It's been a great process. And congratulations on making a decision and getting through it.
Thank you for that. Thank you for all your work on this.
Can we ask questions?
Sure. Question?
So I know I'm not the only one that brought this up. So just curious if it was on the survey at all. We had talked a little bit about, as part of the rebranding. I know I'm going to be attending a memorial day event coming Monday. And there's about a 100% chance that whoever introduced me is going to butcher my last name or the district's name. And there's about a 50% chance they'll do both. So we had talked about, well, not changing my name, but we had talked about maybe dropping a couple of the Cs on the, on the name of the district as, as part of this, that, that we... There are a lot of other community colleges moving away from the word "community" because they're, they want to be seen as more as a college as, instead of the old JC model and the, you know, high school with ashtray model that existed when I went in the 80s. And then, you know, the county, we could get away with South Orange College District, something to that effect where people have a less trip-up when they, when they're talking about our names. So I, I really appreciate the idea of moving away from SOCCCD because that, whatever. But just curious if that was in the survey at all or if it was discussed. And because like I said, I know I brought it up and I'm pretty sure I know at least one other person that brought it up. And just curious what, what traction that had.
That was not anything we asked in the survey. It did come up in some of the individual interviews, but wasn't part of what we explored in the survey itself. But there is a movement, especially with districts. We work with community colleges across the state who do joint marketing with their sister colleges to drop community and district in marketing. So it's something you could explore. So if you wanted to do something larger, a big campaign, you could call yourself the South Orange Colleges or South Orange County Colleges. But you'd probably want to do some more research and talk to people with how that would resonate.
So just in response to that, I mean, we do, we have really three brands here. So we have the district, the South Orange County Community College District. And the two colleges, of course, don't have community in their names. So and, and the, you know, Irvine Valley College, Saddleback College. And those are also brands, as we, I think we all acknowledge, that are more recognized than the district brand. There's no question about that. And that's, great work on the logo. But the, the truth of the matter is the college brands are going to remain, you know, preeminent in the community. So I think to partly address your question, I mean, the colleges are, the names, to my knowledge, are not going to change anytime soon, you never know. But, and they don't have the word "community" in them. I mean. I mean, some of it's related, is it anywhere related to code at all?
My understanding from Vice Chancellor Gable, when I brought it up, thank you TJ, was you, we are incorporated with the state of California as South Orange County Community College District. So it's not just as simple as changing a logo. You'd have to change all of the, there's like official documents with the state of California. We, that discussion has not occurred in the logo discussion. It's, it's not simple, it's, it's more complex.
I was just going to say, I know like the coast colleges for marketing purposes, they say, they say what, coast or coast colleges? But, but their formal title for dis, for state purposes and let's say federal financial aid, it's, they use the full.
Coast Community College District. But they market themselves as coast colleges.
If this is a desire of the board, we're obviously going to have our board retreat this summer and it could be, you know, part two if we want to explore additional marketing and communication.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Is anyone here from Multanegale? Okay. All right, well, I mentioned the Water Hero Award in my board report that we received from the Multanegale Water District a couple of weeks ago here at Saddleback College for their conservation efforts and new irrigation systems that were put in and drought-resistant plants, native plants, water conserving plants. Not all native, but all water conserving. So why don't we do a quick photo up here with the certificate with the, with the full board?
Yeah, and just for context, President Jamal, when the Multanegale Water District reached out about including Saddleback College on their annual garden tour, that includes about 500 of their customers, they were adamant about presenting this Water Hero Award. So I just want to, you know, let you know, for those that weren't able to make it, we're going to take a picture with everyone. This was a big deal for them to be able to award the district with this award. And they were just very proud of the landscaping efforts that have been done on Saddleback College's campus, but throughout the district. And so they wanted to make Saddleback College a point of, you know, to, to see and revere from the rest of the community. So you should be very proud of this award.
Yeah, we were very proud. And I, I, I was there two weeks ago and I think they had their entire, entire board was present for the awarding of this. And also, Letitia, I think they made a, making a video of the event. Do you know the, when that?
It's being edited.
It's being edited, okay. Getting our steps in tonight, all right. Okay, we're now on to the, oh, we're back to the seven... Point one, our Board of Trustees Chancellor items. So seven point one, annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation and to make and second motions for board meetings. Motion from trustee Milchekar, second from trustee Jay. Any questions?
Oh, that's for you to get.
No, let's go ahead and vote. Seven point one is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Seven point two, student trustees' requests for attending, sorry, trustees' requests for attending conferences. Is there a motion? Motion trustee Milchekar, second from trustee Jay. Let's go and vote on the item. The motion, the item carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now on to seven point three, authorization of payment to trustee absent from board meeting. Motion trustee Milchekar. Is there a second? Second from trustee Rydel. Let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote with one abstention and a student trustee yes vote. Seven point four, biennial elections for members of the governing, governing board. Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Milchekar. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Seven point five, board policy revision for review and study. Motion from trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. Motion carries on unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Seven point six, board policy revision for approval. Motion from trustee Prendergast.
Second.
I'll give this one to trustee Milchekar, second trustee Milchekar. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We already did eight point one and eight point two. Let's move to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that trustees want to poll?
Yes. It's nine point, I think it's nine point five.
Nine point five? Okay. Any, any other items? All right. I move the balance of the consent. Trustee Prendergast moves the balance of the items, minus nine point five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Let's vote on the balance of the items. The consent calendar minus nine point five is approved unanimously by trustee, by trustees with a student trustee yes vote. Trustee Jay, you are on with item nine point five.
It's a, it's, has four students and three staffs. It's three in the staff and it's going to go to Honolulu, Hawaii and it's $28,000. And it's only for, you'd say one day over, one day back, five days. I thought that was a little expensive. And it doesn't have enough students. It just has three staff and four students. I'd like somebody to explain this to me.
Sure, it's over a five-day period, trustee Jay. It's May 27th to June 2nd. So it's five-day of the N-COR conference, which is the largest equity conference in the country. Our students were so fortunate as to have been chosen from a juried conference to actually present from their research findings. So they're going to be presented, they're going to be presenting undocumented students and their struggles in the system with the three faculty who are chaperoning and who supported them in their research.
Three staff, I thought it was a little expensive. Is this kind of like a scholarship or is the college paying for this?
It's, the college is paying for it out of SEEP funds. Those are our equity funds. The cost per person is about $4,000, which is comparable to go to a conference in the Midwest or East Coast, even though it is in Honolulu because it's off-season. The flights are not any more expensive and hotels are at a conference rate. This is similar to what the board passed last month for the IVC students who are also going to N-COR.
Thank you.
Just to follow, not related directly, but it would be really awesome if it's, if it's possible to see their presentations, maybe a recording of it or at least the PowerPoint slides if they have any.
We'd be happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know we need a motion. Trustee Jay, do you want to move the item now?
I, so moved.
Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Milchekar, let's vote on nine point five. The item is passed on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to business services. Ten point one, Saddleback College Grant Award from the Foundation for Community Colleges. I guess this is a renewal for the Real Estate Education Center. So we're accepting the grant, correct? All right. Do we have a motion? Motion trustee Milchekar.
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Ten point two, Saddleback College Quad Barrier Project, the awarding of the bid to Icon West. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Prendergast. Let's, any questions? Let's vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Ten point three, Irvine Valley College Library Remodel Project Award of Bid to SSK Construction. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Milchekar. Any questions? No, let's vote. The item carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Ten point four, the awarding of a master and independent contractor agreement for task orders for move management services district-wide. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee Jay.
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Any questions? No, let's vote on the item. Item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to human resources. Eleven point one, academic employees, academic classified administrators, managers, personnel actions, ratifications, any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Milchekar. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote with a student trustee abstention. We're on to eleven point two, classified personnel actions and ratifications.
No changes.
No changes to the item, is there a motion for approval? Motion from trustee Milchekar.
Second.
Second from trustee Jay. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Eleven point three, destruction of class three disposable records.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jay. Second from trustee Milchekar. Any questions? Let's vote on the item. The item carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Now on to our, we don't have any items in educational and technology services. Now on to our information items. Three, thirteen point one, staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. Monthly financial, thirteen point two, monthly financial status report. Thirteen point three, quarterly financial status report. Thirteen point four, OPEB trust fund. Thirteen point five, quarterly investment report. Thirteen point six, pension stabilization trust fund. And thirteen point seven, the basic aid report. We will now move on to reports from the administration and I will start off with Chancellor Barnes.
Thank you so much. So obviously tis the season, we heard the array of activities and events and we all have been participating in the various activities and events. And of note, I do want to point out too that I was, and again, there's, there've been so many. So, and they've been lovely. But Elevate AAPI at IVC, I really appreciated that event. It was the second annual celebration celebrating our Asian-American Pacific Islander students. And also the inaugural Latinx graduation at Saddleback College was just fantastic. Just lots of lovely energy in the room. And, you know, the, the big thing for me that I kind of walked away with, with these various celebrations and thinking of our students. And I think, it makes me think of my own life as well because I think a lot of times our students who have diverse social and cultural experiences walk into the room thinking that those experiences are a liability. But what we've been able to illuminate is that these are actually valuable social-cultural capital that has allowed them to... I get, I'm getting, I'm like thinking of some of the stories that I heard and just in the last several weeks. And I'm just, I'm just proud. And it's just really heartfelt, so I just wanted to say that. I don't know why, I cried at the, at the Latinx celebration too. And it was for the students, I was like, and when I was two years old, you know, I was telling my own story. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about was just all of the employee recognition, the events and ceremonies that we had and the awards that we gave. And again, and even in the room today, I really, I appreciate all of our employees and their commitment, their care, their dedication and their hard work. And obviously it takes a village and all of you have created these learning and work experiences for all of us to thrive and succeed, including our students. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you all.
Thank you for that. It's okay to show emotion, it means you care. Okay, let's move on to reports from the college presidents and we'll start out with Irvine Valley College, John Hernandez.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. Similarly, I'll, I'll kind of keep on that same theme. The last couple of weeks has certainly been quite a sprint where we have come together to celebrate our student communities. I'm just going to list a few of the many, Puente Honors Program Medallion Ceremony, Elevate AAPI Transfer Celebration, the ASIVC, the Pride Scholars, the Scholarship Ceremony, the College Core End of Year Medallion Ceremony, the Early College Graduate Breakfast. And these are just incredible opportunities to lift up the communities. And so many of our students are their first in their families. And as Dr. Bar... And as Dr. Barnes shared, for a lot of us, we didn't see ourselves represented in higher education. So to be able to come together and celebrate, and this is all culminating, of course, to both colleges commencement ceremonies on Thursday. And so we are so pleased and so thankful to all the volunteers and all those that have been organizing. We really are wanting to have the best culminating event for our students so that they remember that. We will be awarding 1,347 certificates and 2,839 degrees. And we will also be recognizing our youngest graduate at 11 years old, Athena Elling, who was, is the young, the younger sibling of last year's Taikal Elling, who was the youngest graduate on record. She is graduating con ladi with an AA emphasis in liberal studies. She is such a well-rounded individual. I got to meet her and her mother and they have a, a third sibling who's enrolled in classes at the college as well. The Orange County Register was out for a photo shoot, they're going to be running the story, I understand, tomorrow, both in digital and printed. So be on the lookout for that. And if you're at IBC, I'm sure you'll want to meet Athena Elling. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Saddleback College, Elliot Stern.
Thank you, Trustee Jamal. In carrying through the theme, the multiple celebrations to congratulate and embrace our many minority students would all be empty if we weren't making progress in actually closing the equity gaps for those groups. And I'm pleased to say that a recent data point that came out just in the last couple of weeks suggests that for the first time, we're closing one of the most important metrics for our Latino students. Specifically, one of the strongest correlates of completion is completion of transfer level English and math in the first year. And for the first time after several years, we have essentially closed that gap for our Latino students and we're very proud of that at Saddleback College. We will be awarding over 7,000 credentials at commencement on Thursday. And I am proud to say that the demographics of how those awards go across our demographic groups pretty much lines up with our student population, which is also a first for us and it says something about the work we're doing on completion equity gaps. And all of that is due to the hard work of faculty in the classroom, the classified employees that support our students and the managers who support those other groups and our students as a whole. I want to thank you on their way out, outgoing Academic Senate President, Margot Lovett, outgoing Classified Senate President, Chantel Gill, for your hard work. Faculty Association President, Melanie Hary. I have enjoyed our one on ones and I will miss you. I will say, I'm glad Scott Green is staying, so we'll have some continuity and a familiar face in the various constituent executives. And finally, I want to thank the board for passing a resolution to honor Pride Month for LGBTQIA++ students and youth. More than a quarter of LGBTQ students experience homelessness in their lifetimes. Sixty, sixteen percent of LGBTQ, LGBTQ youth will be homeless when they run away. 14% of LGBTQ students, youth will be homeless when they are thrown out of their home by their own parents. So to the 10% of our students who identify as LGBTQIA+ at Saddleback and IBC, we thank you and we're, we're glad that we have a message to all those students that they belong in South Orange County Community College District. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. Now moving on to, we don't have our Vice Chancellor of Business Services here this evening, but Priya, do you have a, a report?
Good evening, trustees, Chancellor Barnes. As you know, Vice Chancellor Anne Marie Gable is not here, but she submitted a written report on the Governor's May Revision Budget Proposal for the 2024-25 fiscal year. And I just want to congratulate all the, the staff and employees who got the recognition, but want to especially call out Jackie Hahn from Business Services, who was the District Services Manager of the Year, an amazing individual and we're very proud to be colleagues together. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services.
I have no report.
Okay, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
Two quick acknowledgements. I want to thank Dr. Lovett for leadership of the Saddleback Academic Senate. She worked and her senate worked closely with HR to improve and make better all of the full-time and part-time hiring practices in our district. So thank you, Dr. Lovett, to you and your senate for all of that support and assistance. I also need to thank and acknowledge Melanie Hary. I know she's going to miss my weekly, sometimes multiple calls per day. Melanie, with a heartfelt thank you, your professionalism and leadership and collaboration, I can tell you, I'm, I'm going to miss you and thank you for your service to the district.
All right, well, with that, I wish everyone a good evening and I will probably see most of you on Thursday at commencement. Have a good night.